December two thousand eighteen into beginning of two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I didn't understand you. I thought you meant stuff we'd worked on, not, not the.
We did work on that because there were, uh, I just remember it said, single family detached homes. And we changed it to single family. We took the detached out. So many of our homes are.
Right, they're not detached.
Correct, yet they are historic in nature.
Okay Lucy, you're on.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, uh, of Newville Borough is now in session and I should get my. Bobby, are you ready for roll call?
I am.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, I was writing down that you were writing, taking notes.
Well, we, we were called to order at seven oh two. Jack Erickson is here. Bobby Olson is here, Lucy Janssens is here. I also present are Matt McKnight and Troy Truax.
Did you mention Scott?
Well, well, Scott's not really here. He's just hosting. Although it is a nice picture up there of him. Do we have any citizen comments? No, okay. Now, the minutes Bobby, they did not, I tried to email them out. And I did, and, and so did Fred, but we can't approve them with by just three of us, correct Matt?
Correct.
We need one more. Our new business, uh, is the presentation of the Newville Borough zoning ordinance entry right by Troy Truax of Michael Baker International. So Troy, if you would like to, uh, give us a quick update on that, that'd be great.
Sure, can you hear me Lucy?
Yes, and we're where this will be on the Borough YouTube website adding, you know, for eternity.
So, uh, good evening, everybody. Troy Truax with Michael Baker. I was, uh, got to greet everybody last month. But, uh, just as an update on the, uh, zoning ordinance, we're working through the draft document. There's, uh, we've based upon our work with the task force steering committee, if you will. That includes Lucy and Jack here from the planning commission, uh, Scott, uh, who's hosting the meeting tonight. Um, and Kirk Stoner from the county, uh, and Mark, uh, Michael Couch from, uh, council. Did I miss anybody Lucy who's on the group? Trying to remember. Oh, Matt and Matt, Matt, the solicitor. McKnight, so, um, so we've worked through an outline that has six articles that would comprise the entire ordinance. Uh, they include, uh, general zoning provisions, which is all of the administrative uh, perspectives or, uh, standards, regulations and specifics there. That's in article one. Uh, we've drafted that along with article two, which are the zoning districts. So we have, uh, created a new zoning map for the borough. Uh, essentially what we're proposing at this point is a draft. Um, recognizing that the north end of the borough and the west end of the borough has a mixture of commercial, industrial and residential, um, in those locations. Uh, we're looking at, uh, and also looking at historic types of approvals of conditional uses. And really all those uses from residential, industrial and commercial, uh, really are, are, uh, uh, working compatibly together. Uh, we don't see any conflicts. So what we're proposing is more of a mixed use, uh, really to try to reflect exactly what's happening uh, in those, uh, certain areas of the borough is more of a mixture of uses. Um, their mixed uses, uh, uh, in terms of mixture, they're mixed in terms of, uh, parcel by parcel. But they're, uh, kind of, uh, operating and, uh, uh, working together cohesively in the same type of environment. So, um, and just seeing some of the trends over time, I think we've analyzed that, uh, some of the properties that were residential, they've received conditional use approval for a commercial type of use. So as that trend continues, plus it's an opportunity that it gives property owners, yes.
Can I just interrupt a second? Michael? Scott, are you on there at all? Michael is waiting to be invited into the meeting.
I am, but I don't see them. Hold on.
He said he's saying, seeing a message at the host will let him in soon.
Well, let me try my other, other computer, but give me a minute.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does anyone have a song or a dance they'd like to?
Go ahead Lucy. Sing us your best Vodvell tune.
There you go. I just, I really wish, if we can get Michael in here, I'd like to.
He's in.
Yay. I don't see him, but I believe you.
I just left him in, let's put it that way.
There he is. Yay. All right. Hey Bobby, put Michael Crouch on our attendance list, please.
So you want to go back to the, uh, I guess we can do the minutes later.
Yeah, we'll do the minutes later. Let's. Okay Troy. You're on mute Troy.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, as we were saying, the zoning map that we're working through is a draft. Obviously, it's still a work in progress. The task force group, um, that includes, uh, Michael Couch that just joined the meeting, as well as the others that we talked about, are working through it. Um, again, looking at some mixed use districts that are part of the northern part of the borough and western part of the borough. Those areas that currently have and continue to have, you know, a mixture of commercial, industrial and residential uses. Uh, cohabitating in a cohesive manner. Uh, we don't see any conflicts with those uses, working, uh, together and operating, uh, side by side. Uh, it's, I think the borough historically is a, is a kind of a, a, a village hamlet, if you will, within Cumberland County. Has always historically been kind of a mixture of uses. Uh, so that's really a kind of think consistent with, uh, kind of the historic, uh, growth and development of the borough over time. And then with respect to the village district, uh, we're seeing an opportunity to expand that village district, uh, to include, uh, some of the, uh, areas that are currently zoned R two. And the reason for that is that ex- uh, expansion of the village district, uh, starts to be more compatible with the, uh, his designated historic district that's in the borough. Um, so there's some consistency that we're seeing there to uphold some of those historic uses and also just, uh, the mixture of uses. And how that, uh, area within the borough is operating, uh, as, as sort of the village proper, if you will. And then, uh, the one district, the low density residential district on the southern end of the borough, um, is going to remain, uh, low density residential. Uh, it's, uh, kind of of larger lots, if you will, single family detached, larger lots. So really no change that we're seeing there to occur in the zoning. So again, we're still, continue to work through that. So what that's going to actually ha- allow us to do, uh, with respect to the zoning uses. Then we're going to move forward. That will be article three and we'll be drafting that here over the next several weeks. And have that presented to the committee or the task force for review and comment. And then the final two articles that we'll be, uh, drafting, uh, hopefully in the August, September timeframe will be uh, supplemental regulations, article five. Those are additional, uh, use regulations that are common to any zoning ordinance. And then finally, uh, article six will be the sign regulations. So those, uh, usually every zoning ordinance has, uh, uh, regulations on, uh, 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 signs. Uh, so off, off premises signs, so business signs, et cetera. So, um, so that's where we're heading. I think over the next couple of months, we'll have it drafted. Um, one, I think, topic you had on your agenda tonight was the historic overlay district. And I know what we're trying to do is to try to find that balance where we're not trying to create something so prescriptive and restrictive, like maybe, uh, an area like Carlisle that has an historic, uh, architectural review board. Um, that might be a little bit more restrictive. Um, so we're not, we're not going there. Uh, but, uh, so again, we're trying to hit that balance. And then I think you guys have talked about, maybe you've evaluated, uh, sort of historic district whites. Kind of like maybe what, uh, Village of Boiling Springs where I live, uh, has at South Middleton Township or Mount Holly. So we've drafted or I've drafted a, an overlay district that tried to pay attention to some of the sensitivities where it does not propose a harbor at all. It's more concerned about, uh, with respect to, uh, building demolition and that there's, uh, and that's usually where you get, coming to the lighter standards. I know, uh, uh, South Middleton Township's historic, uh, uh, district regulations really focuses on providing some standards for, uh, demolition. Um, so you do have instances where buildings, uh, uh, propose, uh, safety hazards. They're just too far gone in terms of their rehabilitation. So, um, that's where maybe potentially the, the, uh, the, the task force may want to go with that. But I think Lucy, that's what you probably wanted to talk a little bit about with your planning commission tonight to sort of get their inputs on that, uh, with respect to the, that portion of the zoning ordinance.
Troy, is that what we got in our package is the draft, the section two point O seven of article two?
Uh, in terms of the historic overlay? District, yeah, that was, uh, in that last, uh, draft set that I sent out to the task force back a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there in the latter part of June. So yeah, that section was included in, uh, in that, uh, in that packet under article two. Um, so again, I think that's where, uh, you know, we're looking for some feedback and comment. Again, trying to strike that balance where it's not, uh, over prescriptive or over regulatory. And have them be, be a, we don't want it to be a burden on property owners that own the historic properties. But then also too, if the intent is to have some type of protection of your historic resources, uh, because you do have an historic district. So without some type of, uh, ordinance or regulation to protect those structures that are contributing to that historic district. Uh, then if you, if you don't have anything, then you're really leaving yourself open to, um, you know, really up to the property owner's own goodwill and intention to make sure that they're maintaining those properties. And, uh, they're not, uh, they're not taking matter of historical context in terms of facades and treatments like that, that might, uh, start to erode that historic district integrity that's been designated by the Historic and Museum Commission. And obviously the district is, uh, on the National Register of Historic Places too.
Uh, did, uh, any of, uh, you get a chance to read through that and, um, digest any of it? Um, Fred sent it out to us in our packets.
Uh, yeah, I read it. Well, I think it's good. I guess, uh, the question, um, this is, is this, uh, is this the interior department standards? I think that's what we had said last time Troy, or you had said.
Yeah, there's a, there's a reference to the, uh, interior, Department of Interior standards there that give criteria. Um, but you're really, they're, they're, they're guided, it reflects back on those as, as guidance. I think the real meat of that, uh, uh, jack of that section that's drafted focuses on demolition. So in terms of, you know, kind of the approval review from the planning commission and borough council. You know, when, when property owners are, you know, trying, I think that's where the real meat of that document lies or that section, that overlay district lies in the, um, in the demolition section. So there's a, a review and approval process and an application process that, um, property owners would need to go through if they're proposing some type of demolition, uh, to their building. Again, it, it comes down to demolition is when you have, you know, um, issues where the building has proposes some type of safety hazard and there's criteria in there too, that we list out, uh, for the evaluation of that. So it's not leaving it kind of open ended. We're trying to give some guidance to how you, uh, the borough planning commission provides input back to the council on, uh, any review and approvals of that. And also, and also too, it calls for an historic resource inventory, which is important. So you know, uh, what types of structures are part, uh, are comprised that historic district? If you will.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's, uh, it's good. It does, it also talks about zoning permits and the need for those before any rehabilitation or.
Right, yeah, yeah. So again, it's, it's, it's try, and then those are really, uh, it gives the, uh, zoning codes enforcement officer, if you will, the administrative approval. They, that person, your codes officer has the discretion to determine whether those alterations are, are significant or major. So then again, it, it's really kind of a, it doesn't have to go through a full council approval. It, the, the, there's an administrative, which from a zoning perspective, if you have the administrative approval process at the code enforcement level, it's less, less restrictive, if you will. If you have to go through borough council, obviously there's more kind of a, a review that has to be done. So there's a little bit of a, a different level there, um, that's, uh, taken into consideration too. Again, somebody might have to make some minor repairs to their house structure, if you will, uh, replace, you know, something might have been damaged because of a storm. I mean, that's, that's kind of easy no brainer stuff, right? Um, but if it's something like, again, the demolition side where you're really gonna decide to, hey, we might have to take this building down. That's where more of a prescriptive review and more of a closer look has to, uh, be done based upon the draft that's in front of you.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
No, I just, I was just, um, yeah, I, so I think that's good. I mean, I think that's one of the things that we wanted to make sure we addressed here, uh, which is, um, trying to preserve the buildings that need, um, some attention and not having them be, uh, summarily demolished. So I think it's helpful in that regard.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it does not go into some type of separate architectural review board where they're scrutinizing every architectural detail even down to the, so it does not, I just want to emphasize the, the drafts overlay does not include that level of, of, uh, prescriptiveness in it. So I just want to be clear about that.
Right.
My, my question on this, like I'm looking at number F, um, uh, four F. It's at the top of page four, and it's a report from a registered professional structural engineer describing the structural, this is, this is also under demolition.
Right.
That describing this condition of the historic resource proposed to be demolished, removed or relocated. What's, uh, what's the cost of something like that?
Well, you, you need somebody, if you, if you, if a property owner, or just maybe I'll answer the question this way, Lucy. If a property owner de- decides that, hey, I, I need to move forward. I, I feel that the building is too far gone, deteriorated. Um, it's got some integrity issues, in terms of interior wall or foundation issue. Um, you know, it, coming to council, you know, they're going to need some, some backup documentation. And it's always done by some type of, you know, structural engineer that's qualified to actually do a structural assessment. So depending on, you know, the level of, uh, you know, it all would be depend upon what, what, what level of evaluation has to be done. If it's a foundational issue, um, I know in boiling springs, it was a no brainer. The whole, and there was a building that had a garage, it was a historic structure. Uh, the, 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 the garage itself had actually started to collapse in on, on top of itself. So that, there it was a no brainer. It was absolutely a, a safety hazard. There was no requirement for a, so in this case, that's where possibly somebody could ask for, uh, uh, relief from that requirement. Um, but, you know, as a standard, you should have some type of backup documentation. That's what it's recommending based upon some professional engineers, uh, uh, um, evaluation and report of it. So again, I, I don't want to speculate what the costs are because it would really depend upon the situation. If it's, you know, pretty much that they can go out and say, yep, it's ready to fall in, I would agree. And they could do a simple report. Or if there's more in structural evaluation, it's almost like a house inspection you would get for an appraisal buying a house. Um, but they would have to go in and actually do more physical inspection to the foundation, et cetera, just to determine. So again, it's really to the benefit of, I think, both parties so that both parties can understand um, uh, of what the level of investment would need to be if you're trying to rehabilitate and save an historic structure. Again, demolition really comes down to, it's pretty obvious this building has, is posing some type of danger to the owner or neighboring occupants of, of another building, um, if you will, if that makes sense.
Sure, yep, yep.
So and there's a section about demolition by neglect. Again, it comes down to, you might've had a bad storm come through and, and tear the roof off. And then it might cause some structural integrity issue to it or break, tear down a wall. You know, there's where, you know, you decide, well, can it be fixed and what's the cost of fixing it? Or, and that wasn't by neglect, that was mother nature, if you will. But if it's by neglect that it's just never been attended to and, uh, or it's been an absentee property owner, if you will, in some cases. So it, it varies. So it's really trying to focus on the worst case scenarios, um, to protect those resources.
Um, Matt, did you have a chance to go through that?
Sorry, I done unmute myself. Yeah, I did look through it. Um, and I don't, I mean, other than some very, very minor changes, like the name of the act, I think it's slightly off. Everything looks pretty good to me in terms of, you know, the standards are not heavy handed and, you know, it's pretty clear that it's, we're, we're making it difficult to demolish a structure. And quite honestly, how often do we demolish structures in the historic area anyway? Not, not too often, right? I don't have a problem with it being, um, difficult to demolish. I guess the only thing I'm thinking about is simply, you know, we're using these guideline standards. I'm just thinking practically speaking, if people are coming before borough council and, you know, the council just needs to be sure that it's applying the same types of standards in, in practical terms. You know what I mean? If someone's coming, I mean, we don't want it to be too ticky tack like in the borough of Carlisle. Our office front door, we have to worry about how many pains of glass there are, right? We don't want to do that. But at the same time, if someone's trying to put in a new door on their property, uh, on their front door. Well, let's say one we think is in character and one we think isn't, you know, what, what do we base that on? You know what I mean? It's, there's a lot of vagary there. And I'm wondering how, in practice, how well that's actually going to go over with people that come before us. Or am I overthinking it?
And you're, you're talking about the interior standards, right, uh, Matthew?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and Kirk, Kirk, Kirk commented, you know, Kirk commented on those too. So, you know, the, that could easily be, it may not actually, I, 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 I think I agree with where you and Kirk are coming from, that does it provide, what value does that provide to the, to the regulations? If it, if we're really focused on the demolition section of it, I would say, I would be possibly in agreement to do more, once I look at it a little closer to suggest that maybe we consider even taking that out.
Where's this provision you're talking about, man?
I'm looking at the, well, I'm just, I, I'm actually just looking at, uh, uh, number page two, number two, the, the actual standards that we're using. Um, I mean, they're pretty, they're pretty generic and wide open. And I'm just trying to make sure that, um, however we interpret them, we're very consistent, or as consistent as we can be with people. I mean, these are subjective, subjective judgment calls to some extent. And I just don't want us to get too far in the weeds because I can see that being the one Achilles heel of this is that we're going to have a lot of residents in a historic district if we, if they feel like they're being treated differently because, uh, for similar issues. That could create a lot of headache.
Yeah, and I, and I think from my initial draft standpoint, I suggested introducing that because that's usually always typically what you would find in any historic type of ordinance is, is a reference to those standards. But I, you know, I think just reflecting that, hey, we'll introduce this from the task forces discussion, evaluation, but, you know, based upon the discussion here tonight and also what Kirk had provided comment on in his review of the draft so far. I think that, you know, again, we can acknowledge, yeah, they, these are typical types of provisions, but I think from the borough and what I'm hearing, and I would agree with you, Matthew, they may not be, um, detailed enough or, uh, there, there, there's a lot of ambiguity, I think, is the terminology that you kind of referred. And I would, I would agree. There's, it's, it's left up to too mu- too much subjectivity of interpretation possibly that could cause some issues.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing is that if, if we're going to leave it this, um, see, and that's, that's where I'm torn. I'm not, we don't want to be overly specific, that's a fact. Um, but we just have to be careful that if it's, if we're just going to use this, these standard guidelines, borough's going to have to be very careful when they're making decisions to be as consistent as they can be i- in the practical application of them.
Right.
That's all.
One thing that, um, I do not see in this is something that, one of the, one of the things that we discussed when we were actually brought about the discussion for a historic overlay. And that is, uh, there was a situation where somebody tore down a, uh, structure and replaced it with one that did not fit the character of the, uh, district at all. And so that was one of the things where we were looking for in, uh, crafting this, this, uh, historic overlay was that any replacement structures would also fit with the character of the neighborhood and, and so forth, instead of, um, being completely at odds.
Now, that's a great point. Is this Michael speaking?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a excellent point that you bring up. And we could easily, um, I would definitely, uh, agree that we should add that in there in terms of you demolish a structure, how do you, what's the guidance for replacing that structure? Uh, so we could easily put some, like a provision in there for, uh, replacement, uh, just like some, some design standards in there. Obviously, you've lost, you've lost the actual historic structure. So you, what you're trying to do is to replace it with a structure that's not, you know, totally out of character with, uh, surrounding structures and it starts to erode the integrity of the, the entire district from that perspective.
I agree with that. I agree with that too. Although I do think the demolition standards would help in that regard. I mean, if, uh, I mean, I think we all know the property you're talking about. If they had, had, had to go through this kind of list of things to do, including getting engineering reports and that sort of thing. Uh, it might've been cost ineffective for them to move forward. Um, but I think we do, I think you're right, Mike. We do need something specific in terms of, okay, so you've jumped through all the hoops and you're demolishing it. What are you going to put in its place?
Um, and there would be something about putting the building, the home, if, I mean, I figure we're talking home, I guess it could be a carriage house, you know, a garage in the back. Like, do we talk about keeping the same footprint of the building? Does anybody remember that? Like if it's thirty by, I, I don't know, seventy, then that's what it would have to be, the same footprint where it was before. Did we discuss that? Or am I making that up?
I don't remember. I do not remember that discussion and I don't think we want to be that restrictive.
Yeah, one thing you will have, you'll have the zone, the, the village, the underlying zoning that would prescribe the, the, the setbacks, um, um, et cetera. So you'll have that, you'll have that information or that, those requirements already there because it's part of the, the underlying zoning district. Um, if you will. And also too, you know, the, the lots themselves within which those buildings, a, a demolished building would be removed from have their own kind of limitations and constraints because of this, their, their, the, the lot size and configuration.
Yeah, but I think it's a good point that Mike's raising is, uh, it may be a good thing to go outside the foot, and maybe there, you're saying that, I don't know Lucy, but it may be a good thing to go outside the footprint because that means somebody wants to put, uh, you know, do more to mo- to modernize it, to make it useful going into the, into the future. It might be just too small, otherwise for them to take the trouble to save. So.
Yeah, and they would have to, and they would be able to because there's, there's, uh, uh, you know, the setbacks, you know, there, you could actually, you know, enlarge the, the, the previous footprint, like for example, you could, you know, you know, make the, as long as you're within those setbacks, you still would have the ability to actually increase kind of the original footprint of the building. If you wanted to increase the square footage and make it more, maybe fit into the character exteriorly, but inter- interiorly, you're making it more modern, and that's, that's totally fine. Um, historic, you know, architecture only replies to the outside part of the structure, not the inside. So I think there's no, there's no prohibition on, you know, someone wanting to build a bigger structure, but still abiding by the underlying zoning district regulations that would still allow them to create a bigger structure if they wanted to. Based on the setbacks.
Yeah, Troy, did you say we should have a list of properties? Or are we thinking that this historic district overlay wouldn't just include the town?
No, the, it, it, so you, there's a provision in there that the historic, there's, there's a section called boundaries of the district.
Yeah.
The very beginning of your document. And then it's the Newville Historic District. And that boundary is, is officially recorded in the National Register of Historic Places. And that's effective June twenty eighth, twenty ten, because that's the letter that PHMC provided. So the boundary of the district, the overlay district
I got you.
Abides by the boundary of that historic district as a, as, as a record in the National Register. So within that, in that, there was an historic um, inventory, um, historic resource inventory done, and that's what they use to justify creating that district. So what you would want to do is to have, you know, there's a provision there for under E, item E, paragraph E, two below that, that says historic resources inventory. And it charges the planning commission and consultation with the Cumberland County Historical Society and PHMC. So it's not just the planning commission having to do this on their own. You got the county and PHMC that, you know, would be kind of your experts, if you will, that would help maintain that list. And you already have that list in one of those county documents that we have, that we talked about. So the bottom line is, you know, maintaining that inventory is kind of a one-time thing and, you know, on a frequent, you know, basis, maybe just review it, make sure it's still consistent, et cetera. But again, the only time it would need to be updated is if you have to expand the, that if the historic district for whatever reason got expanded or contracted, or if there was demo occurring, and then you'd have to reconsider a demolished historic structure is no longer contributing because you can't replace that structure historically.
So this would only apply to the buildings on that list, or does it apply to the entire district, the historic district overlay, that?
It, it, yeah, it would be the inventory of those historic resources within that historic district. So technically, you already have that inventory done. It's just that you need to have the, I think what this is really getting at is you should have, since you're now having an ordinance to enforce the district, you really need, should have that inventory uh, readily and, and at hand versus trying to have it somewhere buried in another document.
So, Michael, the, the structure to which you refer, this would not apply because it's not on that list. If I'm hearing you right, Troy, only those houses or structures on the inventory would this, this would apply to.
Yeah, with thi- thi- this, yeah, this overlay district applies to historic structures that are de- that are designated as part of that inventory. It applies to those historic structures within that district.
Okay.
So again, that's what you need to think about. It's, there's a boundary, the historic district boundary, and all of the resources, the historic resources that were originally inventoried, surveyed and inventoried by PHMC designate that historic district. That's the inventory that you need to maintain because that's really what you're coming down to. Now, if you decide that you want to have other historic structures in the borough on that list, but the, the historic district, the overlay doesn't apply to any of those resources outside that boundary.
But let's say Scott's house is not on that inventory list. You remember Scott's house on the corner?
Yep.
Let's say that's not on the list. Can he do? I'm just trying to even think, can he, does he, he doesn't have to follow the demolitions. He could tear it down and
Yeah, if it's not, if it's not, technically, if it's not on that list, it's, and it's not a contributing structure to the district, then, you know, it's not deemed an historic structure, so.
Yeah, see, how do we protect structures like Scott's that is not on an official
You'd have to, you'd have to, you know, to deem that an historic structure, you'd have to have a survey done and then have to be added to that inventory.
So we can't have and it, and historic district overlay that just applies to an area. It has to be building specific.
Yeah, it has to apply to the, you know, what's, what's, what makes up, what are the contributing structures to that historic district?
So Michael and Jack, this would not have kept that other situation from happening. If I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, that's kind of news to me too. So there were twenty-two buildings on that um, inventory, as I recall. So Troy, what you're saying is, these, these um, rules here for the historic overlay would only apply to those twenty-two buildings.
Yeah, it would apply to those buildings that are, that were surveyed. Because the, if you think about it, that district had to be defined by a certain, and I'll do some more research just to make sure I'm not um, mischaracterizing, but, you know, that, there's a, a survey done to determine that historic district, and there's buildings that actually comprise and, uh, and contribute to that historic district. So those are the ones that are most, you know, those are the ones that, that kind of make that up. But I'll, I'll do some more research on it to this, to make sure that I'm not uh, misinterpreting, that it's not just a blanket coverage for every single building in that district.
Yeah, that would be helpful. That would be.
Yeah.
Understand that.
And that's, that's why we were interested in it to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a reason why that historic district was put in place, and it goes back to the reason of that historic district in terms of why was it created in the first place? It was based upon the inventory of structures that comprised that district. So those, those buildings were surveyed, there was detailed analysis done on those buildings to, to, to confirm of their contributions to his, to the historic district itself.
Okay, well, that's, I'm gonna depend on my memory here because I could not find the, the hard copy. When we were looking over, I think it was Mount Holly's or Boiling Springs, I'm not sure which. Historic district. They had any building built prior to nineteen sixty-seven. And that, so that's like in Newville, that would be all that one or two buildings, homes. They had the single family dwellings and they had it detached. We took the.
Yeah, and then any building that's over fifty years old is quote unquote, an historic structure. So that's kind of like, it's like a, you know, antique automobile. Is anything, what, like twenty years and older? So a, a structure, anything built fifty years and older is like, uh, you know, quote unquote, an historic structure.
Are buildings over fifty years old in the historic district not currently designated on that list as historic properties be covered?
Well, I, I, I'm sorry to jump in here. No, we're talking about the historic district and the overlay. At the moment, it's just covering those structures that are, have been designated historic as it is. So when we're talking about historic district at the moment, that's all we're talking about. My, my question was, I thought it was more than twenty only because, and maybe I'm the one that was mistaken. If I remember right, um, and I pulled up teams to look at it, Troy, the, um, the map that was shaded yellow in the middle that Newville had, uh, oh, it was a letter, the Historical Museum Commission from like, uh, July of twenty-ten. And at the end, there was a little map, do you remember? And it was mostly the Village District that was highlighted in yellow.
Yes, that's that.
Twenty properties.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it, it, it comprised, and then, so there was that boundary that was part of that letter, and that, that obviously, that map in there was a little bit dis- distorted um, from that letter. And what we did, we went in and actually digitized that boundary and made it suit to the actual kind of uh, spatial extent that it should be correct. But then also too, there was that county from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority had that document that included that inventory of historic structures. So that, that's, that's more like that number, like twenty or so were on that list. I don't know the exact number, but during one of our task force meetings, we shared that list and discussed that list. And that was one of the exercises that we were gonna try to have the county mapping do is to on those, for each one of those properties, identify them within the historic district boundary.
Okay. I was just thinking, yeah, because even if the map wasn't quite right, um, it still wouldn't comprise a lot more than, than twenty properties.
Yes, it, oh, definitely, most definitely.
Yeah, so we're not talking about just twenty properties. We're talking about something that, that mirrors what's going to be the Village District, maybe not, not exactly, but, but there's a lot of overlap. Unless I'm mistaken, but that's what I remember looking.
Yeah, so the Village District itself, um, you know, that's the zoning district. It was a smaller than what we did. We expanded the village, the base district to
Right.
largely match. It doesn't match perfectly, but it largely matches the boundary of the historic, the, 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 the actual National Register Historic District.
Right.
Boundary.
So, and so we're saying that the historic district overlay would be what, uh, the on that map, there was just that little triangle out by the church that we didn't include in the Village District. So we're saying that's all it would be, not the entire town.
That's correct, Lucy, because what, again, what's governing the overlay district itself is the historic district boundary. So that's just like the floodplain boundary. What governs it is the floodplain, the FEMA floodplain boundary for that overlay district, and the same applies.
So we can't, we can't do that for the entire town.
Well, it seems, it seems to me there's a little bit of a, a miscommunication as far as what we were looking for with this overlay. Um, because as, as the draft is here, it, it is a historic district overlay. And what the planning commission was, had discussed uh, last year and, and what we were seeing, what I thought we were looking for was more of a historical overlay for the town to, to protect, as you said, any building that's over fifty years old and is considered historic. Um, not just those that are on the National Register.
You know, what I can do, Michael, let me do some research on that because I, um, the objective to have it cover the entire town, I, I wasn't, I, I wa- I might have misunderstood. I wasn't clear on that. I was just going for the fact that you do have that historic district, and that's typically the boundary that applies there. So let me do some research on that to see if, you know, the overall historic boundary could apply to the entire town. I'm not, I gotta see how that works with the historic district versus areas outside the historic district, if you will.
Sure.
Matthew, does that make sense?
It does. I mean, I think when we did try to do this before, a- and Troy, you'll want to talk to Kirk, I'm sure, because, um, Kirk was concerned, but part of, some of the comments were, they were concerned that we were trying to be a little overly broad in covering the entire town. Now, because of this way, because of the way the whole thing uh, panned out going before the council and whatnot, I don't think that was really, uh, you know, we didn't look at that in depth, but, um, I think we need to have a conversation with county as well to, to see.
Yeah, because that. Yeah, and I think the reason why it was too broad was, you know, you do have a, a resource inventory that was done on those buildings within that historic district. So you had a very detailed analysis done of the borough, and it was determined that your historic district does not include the entire borough boundary jurisdiction. It's only that portion that we know now is defined in that June tenth letter from PHMC that actually designates that district.
Right, right.
We, if we do not, um,
So again, that's what they deemed was sort of the, that's, yeah.
If we change the terminology then, and just, can we, can we create an ordinance that designates any structure or, uh, built before a certain year, uh, as protected to some measure or, um, you know, so maybe it doesn't fit under the definition of a historic overlay.
Yeah, what I, what I need to do is go back and look at, it's Act one sixty-seven, right, Matthew? That's the Historic District Preservation Act. Again, that's, that's the legal authority within which, with which municipalities have to do exactly what we're talking about. And I need to go back and, maybe Matthew, you could help is to determine what level of authority does it give municipalities? Can you just blanket say anything over fifty years old is, you can protect it? Um, or does it have some other, I need to go back and do some review of that legal language, Michael.
Okay.
And my, and Matthew, maybe you can help me with your uh, legal perspectives on that.
I'd be happy to. We can look at it together and.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and even if we can't, uh, you know, if we can't do an historic overlay over the whole borough, uh, at least it would be interesting to find out if we could include all the structures in the historic district rather than just the twenty-two, because.
And I think that's probably
Understanding.
That's probably where, where we're probably more likely heading is now you've got a legal basis because you now have a designated historic district. So you have, you know, the, the, you have structures that are does deemed historic, they're on the National Register, that's those twenty-some properties, but then you've got others that are actually what I would say contributing structures as well that are fifty years old, but this didn't make the cut, if you will. But I think within that boundary of an historic district, there's a reason why that boundary includes all those buildings within there. And I think where it might be a little bit of a reach is where probably Kirk was going, or at least from the county's perspective, is anything outside that, you don't, you're outside of this designated district, so you have some maybe legal type of, uh, um, issue there where you're not, you're not really truly trying to go by what a overlay district or, excuse me, an historic district is, is, is prescribing. But again, I would have to go back and look at Act one sixty-seven and just read the legal language and determine a level of authority that maybe Scott, Matthew too, maybe we can find out from PHMC, you know, if there's anything more behind that letter of what, what that district was, and maybe that's where the Historical Society of the County could help out with too. Um, but yeah, we, we can do some more research on that. That's, it'd be pretty easy to do.
Just looked it up on the internet. It says the Newville Historic District goes from Cove Valley over by the Big Spring Rails or Trails, et cetera. And then it goes, it encompasses four hundred and fourteen structures. It seems like a large number.
Uh, it probably would be that many within, we can look at the number of parcels, but that's, there's a lot of parcels within that boundary.
Okay.
Um, that, that district. So that, if you look at four hundred and some structures, that's, I would venture yes, that's number of structures within, but it's not the entire number of structures within the borough. I don't know the math on it, but if I would think about a, a fraction, it's probably maybe a third of the borough that might be covered by that historic district.
Yeah, because it's, yeah. It can, there's a one contributing site and two contributing objects in the central, um, historic district, it says.
Yeah, so there, so yeah, there's a, a, a document that, uh, we could share with the planning commission, Lucy, Jack, and you guys have it, um, of course, but it, it provides a specific list of those historic buildings. I think the fountain, of course, would be like an object or like a resource. It's not a building, but it's a, it would, it would be part of that.
It includes that, and the, uh, Veterans of Foreign Wars Memorial Monument and the cemetery, the Big Springs Presbyterian Cemetery. So it does have, um, different buildings in there.
I think it's termed the, uh, historic structures. I think that's, so some of them are not buildings.
Yeah.
Of that twenty-two.
Correct.
All right, so you'll look into this further?
Absolutely. Yeah, this is good because this gives us some good direction of how we need to refine that part of the draft ordinance that we have now before the task force. So this is. that part of the draft ordinance that we have now before the task force. So this is a good discussion.
Well, I'm glad you are, were here for this, Troy, because I, when I read what we have here, um, and what my memory from the ordinance that we were gonna model the Newville ordinance after, it was like a whole different, uh, animal. So.
We got that from Kirk.
Did we?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Was it Mount Holly? Does anybody remember?
I think it might have been.
Okay.
I, I may have it somewhere in my files. I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I definitely have it. I just didn't understand what you were asking for, Lucy. I still have it with me tonight. So I can.
I wasn't clear?
No, I don't know that it was you. I think I just misunderstood.
It's all good. It's all good. I just am glad we're discussing it because this, to me, is a very important, uh, part of our zoning ordinance. And I'd like, you know, a lot of the stuff I don't know. I just, this is one part I'd like to make sure that we get it right as right as we can.
Yeah, and this is, uh, this discussion is good because it helps inform the drafting of it too, because I, you know, didn't have the benefit of being part of your previous conversations and work on this. So I'm, uh, putting my best foot forward to draft something up and then get reaction to it, which is exactly what I need to give, put me in the right path forward to get it where we need it, where you want it to be.
Appreciate that. So I think you've got a good start on it.
I agree. Um, do we have any more discussion then on the, uh, how, okay, so for Bobby's information for the minutes? Where, how is this gonna proceed for the historic, uh, district? Whether we have, can.
So what I'll, what I'll do, what I'll do with Matthew is to do some, John, Act one sixty-seven, which is the, gives municipalities the authority uh, to, 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 to regulate historic structures within their jurisdiction. So we'll do some research on that and then the, the goal there is to find out within the, the historic district, you know, does it allow you to regulate just buildings, anything over fifty years old? Can that apply to anything in the borough or does this just have to apply within the historic district as designated by PHMC and what's on the National Register?
So you will find out whether we can do the his, what, this is just what we were calling it. You may call it anything you like. The historic district overlay light. If we can do that over the entire borough or if it just must be within that orange map, which is all the village district. Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. That's correct, Lucy.
And you'll find out also if that, um, all the buildings, like Bobby said, the four hundred and some, some objects are would, depending how we have to handle it, would be subject to, uh, whatever it is we come up with if it does have the name Historic District Overlay.
Yeah, that's correct. Now, I'll check with Kirk then too, to get his, uh, okay, is that, uh?
Yeah, you know, we can, we can do both also. We have to have something very specific for the historic, uh, overlay. We can have that and for the other, you know, the mixed use areas, we can have something else.
That's called having your cake and eat it too, Lucy.
Yeah, that's the way I like life. Right? I mean, it's, it's all right, isn't it?
What, whatever you want, Lucy, right?
Thank you, sir.
All within the, all within legal, legal bounds, right, Matthew?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's, you, you said it upfront, a full circle. That's why Matthew's here to keep you out of trouble, right?
Well, he does do that for us.
I would just say that, you know, um, it'll be useful to have the information and then we'll need to think about how to, depending on what their options are, if there are any options, um, I think this is, uh, the broader this is, the tougher a sell it's gonna be, I think. And I think we'll have to factor that into our thinking. Um, if we cover all the buildings in the borough, uh, then you potentially have everybody in the borough opposing this. The narrower the reach of the provision, the less resistance we'll get. Now, that's not a, that's not an argument to do it narrowly. It's just though I think we need to think about that once we know the options that we have before us.
Yeah, because you know, then it becomes, if, if you're just applying it blanketly to every structure that's over fifty years old, then you possibly could have buildings that really have no historical value other than just an age. And then it really becomes you're putting people that, you know, in some type of situation, now they've got to fight to just do something with their building. So that, yeah.
Right. Yeah, you want to make sure you've got a legitimate claim.
Exactly right, Jack.
To an historic building. You can't.
Oh, and also it's not just that, the character of the neighborhood.
The, 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 the simple that, yeah, I mean, it, it could be even like, you know, you want to try to do economic development, which you have an economic development committee and you want to try to revitalize. Maybe it's, let's just say the old ribbon mill that finally it's, you know, you don't have a, you never have a buyer for it. And, you know, it, it, it could be a, a, somebody coming in and say, hey, I've got a, a better plan that gets you more tax revenue. I got a nice project that would, you know, but I have to demo that building. But that building we know is definitely over fif- fifty years old. Then, then you're kind of stuck in a way. You've kind of now regulated to your point where you can't, you can't actually induce positive change even for economic revitalization.
Well, isn't that where you come in with a variance or you come in and you ask somebody, the zoning hearing board?
Well, then you'd have to demonstrate the hardship. What's the hardship? And you can't, right, Matthew, you can't use economic hardship as your, as your basis.
It's more of a physical, they're all physical characteristics.
Yeah, if you've got an odd shaped lot, like a triangular shaped lot or something, for example, but yeah, you've there's prescriptions in the MPC Municipalities Planning Code for hard, uh, variance request and it has to be, meet the hardship test. So it's very challenging. Yeah, a waiver in the subdivision ordinance is a lot easier than a variance in the zoning.
That's true.
Okay.
So that's.
Uh, this is, this, so, uh, Matt and Troy, along with Kirk maybe, are gonna figure this out and get back to us at the next meeting.
Yep, we'll, we'll have that, uh, uh, we'll have that worked out by then. All right. Hopefully this met your expectations for tonight.
Um, yeah, I really appreciate the discussion. As I said, this is one part I uh, really want to get right, uh, the best we can, looking into the future.
For sure.
Yeah.
So can we let, is anyone else have any, any questions or, or discussion for Troy? Can we let him get back to his baseball game?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure. Thanks, everybody. And we'll, uh, be talking here, uh, some of us sooner than, uh, uh, the next month.
All right, thank, did we set a date for the task, next task force meeting?
Uh, not yet. I need to put that after now the holidays over and I'm back. Kind of getting focused. I need to get one on the calendar, Lucy.
And Michael, make sure, uh, I, let, be in communication. If it doesn't suit you and you know it, can you let us know so we you and Scott, so you can both be there?
Definitely.
Okay. All right, Troy. Thank you.
He's gone.
No, I meant Troy.
Oh, yep.
No.
Good night, good night, everybody.
Night.
Thank you.
Night.
Um, so to the rest of us, did everybody get the June minutes that emailed out? They got emailed out late possibly? They're not in the packet?
I got them.
Did you get them in the packet?
No, no, they were emailed by Fred, I believe.
Okay. Um, Michael, did you have a chance to read them?
Yes, there wasn't much to read.
No, there wasn't.
So can I, uh,
Forget the, the March ones?
Very succinct.
I, I, I emailed them to Fred, but they did not make the packet. So uh, I'll, I, I'm gonna have to take more responsibility for this, which is funny because I'm responsible. Um, so can we approve the minutes of the, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June tenth meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, who's second? Jack is first. Who's second?
It was Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any nays, any abstentions? So they are approved. Uh, I did not see in my packet either the zoning officer's report. Did anyone else? Did I miss it?
I didn't, wasn't there.
Okay, so there is none, um.
There actually, well, there, there wasn't one in the packet, but there was one that, um, uh, that was made available to, uh, the Borough Council and it was pretty extensive. I don't know if you saw it, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's like many pages, which is a good thing because, because it's, it, you know, they're picking up the pace. There was a meeting with the, uh, I can't remember. It's, it's the acronym. It's Pennsylvania something or other. The, the people that do our code enforcement and, um, uh, they got a message that they needed to be doing a more aggressive job. And there's, the last report was, I had six or seven pages, um.
Wow.
And they, they, they basically had a lot of properties that they had made notations on that need, things need to be corrected, but they had not followed up on them. So they got very active in following through on known issues.
Are, are these? My concern with this is we have new young families in town who have bought properties that are old buildings that need to be fixer-uppers maybe. Are they being given, I mean, the, the landlords that we've discussed that are, or the Borough Council has discussed and the chronic stuff, but these new homeowners, are we giving them uh, extra time or leeway to get stuff taken care of?
Everyone, everyone, including the landlords, is being given adequate time to make, make any needed repairs or corrections. And if, if, um, there are circumstances, whatever, that they can't get it done within the original timeframe, I know that I saw that there were several extensions issued and, and so forth. So, yeah, there, there, the follow-through is primarily, um, not even, you know, corrective action necessarily for most of them. It, it is that they may, that they noted that there was an issue needed to be corrected and they hadn't even sent out letters to the homeowners or to the property. To do anything. So they're, they're getting things accomplished now and there were one or two, I think, you can correct me, Jack, there may have been one or two corrective actions, but most of them were just simply following through on notifying people that things needed to be done, verifying that it was, were, uh, corrections were made and, and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, they're being really workable.
Yeah, and they, and they, for the first time, at least since I've been looking at them, uh, they had a section at the back of, you know, have the, the ones they've closed out.
Yes, okay.
Which is very helpful because, you know, it just seemed to roll on and on forever without anything really changing. So I think they got the message, um, that, uh, I don't, were you at that meeting for, Mike?
No.
Okay, so I guess it was Scott and Fred and I think the mayor was there. I was gonna come, but I couldn't make it. Um, but they gave him a pretty hard charge and I, I think they, you know, they saw the light. So I think we can look forward to, um, some more forward leaning enforcement, uh, and, and I, and they, they know we're gonna be watching them, you know, that, and then they know we're gonna be evaluating it, uh, to see whether they can actually do the job adequately. So.
Good, good, cuz I, good. Okay, um, anything else to discuss?
What was that, Lucy?
Anything else to discuss?
I, I don't have anything. I think Michael summarized, uh, what was going on with the codes enforcement pretty well.
Oh, good, good. Um, so Bobby, have you got, you've gotten everything? Are we good?
I think so. I got a lot of notes, um, and actually I was typing it up this time, so I didn't wait to be able to do it.
And you can also go to the Borough YouTube channel and it's all there.
Yeah, well, that was five o'clock this morning. So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's when I remember what day it was.
That's all right. Um, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. That was Michael and Jack.
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Uh, saying no. All right. Hey, everybody, thank you so much. I really, uh, think we got a lot accomplished. We got a lot discussed that Troy got, uh, to know what we had discussed. So I really appreciate you all.
Can I assume it's on Zoom next month too?
I'm, say what?
Is it gonna be on Zoom again next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. What, what's the feeling of the other, of Jack and Michael and Matt? Is, is Borough Council zooming next month?
Yes. Is it? I'm not sure. Is it, Mike? Oh, Scott, you on?
I think, yeah, I'm, I'm on. Uh, I mean, my understanding is we're, we're gonna continue with Zoom until, well, until the council decides that they're not going to.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we should Zoom until council decides not to as well. We should just follow their, whatever.
Yeah, we should have a uniform policy and.
Well, um, I'm, I'm down with that. I'm, I missed Jay and, uh, Jim, and I don't know if Sharp just forgot or I, I have a par law school district addressed for him. He may have a different one, but I'll, I'll call him and see where he's at with this. All right, everybody. Thank you so much, um, and good night.
Y'all later.
Not all.